Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 16, 2022. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent Carlson.
All right, thank you. Why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
It's all moved to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Griscoviac to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And we have two sets of minutes to approve. The first one, August 1st, there was no in absent from that meeting. Yep.
Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 1st, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Griscoviac, second by Johnson. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and those minutes are approved. Now we're looking to approve the minutes of the August 12th, 2022 meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll move to approve the minutes of August 12th.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Hernandez Jr. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and those minutes are adopted.
One abstention.
Yep, two abstentions, Rayrower and Carlson. Do we give him an abstention if he's not even here to abstain?
He's an absent.
All right. We are on to our consent agenda, and we have two items on our consent agenda. The first one is item three on our agenda this evening, and that is we've staff has received and reviewed the semi-annual reports for January 1st through June 30th, 2022, showing the gambling expenditures within the city of Coon Rapids. And I'm sorry, this is, we are going to receive our mid-year gambling expenditure report. So we've received the report for the gambling expenditures within the city of Coon Rapids and trade area for the seven organizations at 16 locations. The combined net profit this period was reported at $787,109.26, with expenditures within the trade area, which includes the city of Coon Rapids, reported at $981,358.47. And the reported combined expenditures specifically within the city of Coon Rapids was $801,153.49. So with this, we're looking to receive the gambling expenditure report for the first half of 2022. The next item on our consent agenda, which is item four on this evening's agenda, is to consider a new Singular Wireless AT&amp;T lease amendment for the Hanson Water Tower. The city and New Singular Wireless, which is AT&amp;T, entered into a lease agreement on September 7th, 2007, to allow AT&amp;T to lease space on the Hanson Boulevard Water Tower for telecommunications purposes. AT&amp;T and the city have entered into two prior lease amendments in 2014 and 2020 to allow for additional antennas and equipment. AT&amp;T is in the process of refurbishing its directional antennas on the water tower. In that process, they desire the ability to place 12 directional antenna on the water tower. Currently, the lease and prior amendments allow for nine such antenna. City staff do not object to the additional antenna as long as they meet all requirements under the current lease and city ordinances. As consideration for the added antenna, AT&amp;T will pay the city an additional $3,500 in rent per year. Under the current lease, their rent in 2022 is $48,707.49. So we are looking to authorize approval and execution of the Third Amendment to the lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower, second by Geisler. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda is approved, adopted. We are on to item five, under new business, consider resolutions ordering preparation of feasibility report and plans for 23-1 street reconstruction. And this is what Mr. Hanson presented to us at the last meeting, correct?
Mr. Mayor, this was presented to council in work session, I believe, last month.
Okay. Sometime in the past.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a presentation, or do you, should I just kind of mention the streets, or what would you like to do?
I'll go briefly, Mr. Mayor. Presentation won't come until after the feasibility report is completed. This is gonna provide the, excuse me, the estimated costs, funding sources. It's approximately 4.5 miles, north-central part of the city, generally bounded between Main Street, Coon Creek Boulevard, Shenandoah in the east, and 131st on the north. So it's about 4.5. It's a little less of a project than we typically do. We're trying to be responsible and handle our funding components of this. So again, this just starts the process of 429. We'll make communication with property owners in the area, discuss concerns, issues, what this entails, but this is the first step in the process and really allows us to look at and investigate what the issues are and come up with our costs and funding sources. So other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
I do have question for Mr. Hammer, or Mr. Hanson if he was here, but on item number, let's see, it's 11 here. 131st Avenue from Shenandoah Boulevard to Coon Creek Boulevard. That definitely needs to be redone. We're gonna put a sidewalk on the north side of 131st there. We've already done a sidewalk on the north side of 131st from Coon Creek over to, all the way over to Crooked Lake. I was wondering, as you're preparing these feasibility reports in preparation for this, is it possible to add a section of sidewalk from Coon Creek Boulevard, or excuse me, from Shenandoah Boulevard, extend that down to Wildwood Park? It would be about 100 feet of extra sidewalk, but it would allow people to get in and out of Wildwood Park, up on the sidewalk, all the way over to Crooked Lake Park. Seems like it might work.
Councilmember Griscoviac, council, yes, we could certainly look at that. I may just contact you to just get some specifics. I'll look at some aerials and some other things, but if I'm confused in the location, I'll certainly reach out to you.
Okay, sounds good. Gets a lot of use.
Is that the kind of thing that could come in the ordering of the preparation of plans and whatnot?
What we will do is investigate that as part of the feasibility study and report that as part of that report.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
I make a motion to adopt the following resolutions necessary for Project 23-1 as part of the 2023 Street Reconstruction Program. That would be Resolution Number 23-1/3, ordering preparation of feasibility report, and Resolution Number 23-1/6, ordering preparation of plans.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Griscoviac. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item six is to consider cooperative agreement for construction of sanitary sewer rehabilitation, 21-26. Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, council, this is kind of a second run for the Met Council in doing lining of their large diameter pipes through the city. It starts from just north of City Hall here on the north side of Highway 10, runs along Coon Creek all the way down to the lift station that they did work on just probably two, three years ago. Excuse me, my throat. We are working together with them in that we are requesting that they line a few segments of our pipe that connects directly into theirs, and doing that now avoids us having to pull permits and go through authorizations and reviews and approvals. So they're gonna line one segment of pipe of every city sewer that connects into that system, as well as we've asked them to clean and televise a few segments upstream of that to help us look at what our large diameter pipes are as we kind of get into the larger concrete pipes. We've done some lining, we're gonna have some more coming, so this just allows us to get a look as part of their project. They will be removing some trees within Earlenson Park and other things to lay their temporary bypass. They're gonna compensate the city for those. And in exchange for us delaying a trail project for several years, they're gonna pay 50% of the cost as part of this within Earlenson. So there's quite a few things in here. We think it's a really good project. We tried to nail them down in the schedule because we know that sometimes slips, but I think we got a good deal here. We got a good project, and I would recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Hammer, do you anticipate any interruptions here with this lining project? It sounds like we're gonna do some bypasses again, kind of like they did Donough of 99th and Yegrit. Is that kind of what that'll look like again?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's gonna be pipe laying on the ground. That's where they have to just kind of find spaces away. They wanted to, you know, do some temporary trenches, and we didn't allow that to happen. They wanted to cut into Yegrit Boulevard, all kinds of things, but this is gonna be all above grade. There will be some excavation and some borings underneath the roadways. There may be very brief interruptions in service, but it's not gonna be anything that people are even gonna notice is occurring.
Okay. It's, so, thinking about 48 inches of sanitary sewer moving. Oof. That's a lot. Yep. Let's keep that moving. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion, let's see, to recommend and approve the execution of the cooperative agreement with Metropolitan Council Environmental Services to rehabilitate city trunk sanitary sewer connections and restore affected pedestrian trails within Earlenson Park.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Rayrower. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we are on to item seven, consider resolution 18-26/8, accepting plans and specifications for recycling center expansion and authorizing solicitation of bids. And, is Mrs. Sinclair here, just in case we have questions, or is there a dog and pony show here, or what do we have, Mr. Hammer?
No dog and pony show, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to just briefly run through this for you. It's been quite a while to get here. We finally have a plan, we're prepared to move forward with. We're ready to seek bids to come up with what those costs are going to be. There is a memo coming up next, I believe, so the county has agreed to some grant funds for their reuse program as part of this. So as it was initially in the project as an alternate, we can now leave it in as an actual item and determine what that cost will be. We've gone back and forth on this one a few times, different layouts, different sized buildings, trying to meet the budget. Time will tell. If that's the case, we're gonna get these bids. We're gonna come back to you with a recommendation, potential funding package. At that time then, it's up to you to decide how we proceed or how we don't proceed with this, but we've tailored it down to the best we can. I think Colleen will agree. She may not get everything out of it, but it certainly solves our most immediate concern, safety, access, circulation, and it gives us ability for future expansion with some of the other items that we wanted to be included as well. So this is our opportunity to see what the costs are gonna be, and we'll report back to you in about six weeks, and we can take it from there. And I'm happy to answer questions, and Colleen is here as well.
Very good. Yeah, it's exciting. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hammer on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'll move adoption resolution number 18-26, print's eight, close print's approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the recycling center expansion project.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Rayrower. Is there any further discussion on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
I'm glad to see this presented tonight, and we have that 50% matching grant from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency that we want to utilize as a frequent participant in using the recycling center. It is busy all the time and does great work, and we're saving tons and tons of waste from going to the landfill, so just wanted to share that I'm glad to see this tonight.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
Just like in terms of efficiency, how is that gonna play into the new layout of that? Have much improvement on that then, when it comes to efficiency?
Councilmember Hernandez Jr., I can certainly let Colleen speak. I'll let her work her way up there. I do know we're moving the styrofoam recycling out to its own places, as opposed to being a little more disjointed. We'll have a place inside for everything, and I'll let her expand a little on that.
Yes, we will have a lot of efficiencies. We've outgrown our spaces, especially our styrofoam program, which is kind of what spearheaded this funding package. We need more space, and we run out quickly. If you could have saw the load I had in there on Monday night, you would have never imagined what it would look like. But yes, we'll have efficiencies, better traffic flow, we'll have opportunity for expansion in the future if need be with just different programming. So it's so needed, so needed in so many areas, so.
Certainly a well-used facility.
And we're very excited for this step. It's a big one.
In addition, Mr. Mayor, council, there's all kinds of product that's stored outside, and it's on the elements, and that makes it unusable. So by getting it inside, we actually can generate some revenue coming back as part of that recycling program. Great.
Awesome. All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to point out that if there's residents of our community that haven't used this recycling center, definitely check it out. Colleen, you do a great job on there. Every time I go in there, there's a lot of helpful staff. You get in and out of there, and you can really get used, you know, get rid of a lot of that recyclable product really easily. The people out there are really nice to work with, really help out our residents.
And now that, with that paint recycling, I mean, that's a lot, because everybody used to have to go over to Blaine, the hazardous.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? It was close, but it went.
Squeak fight. You pushed it over the top.
Pushed it over the top, yep. It's good that you were here. And thank you for being here, though, actually.
Still gotta get through the bits.
Yep. Item eight, consider resolution 22-86, accepting additional 2022 SCORE grant from Anoka County. Colleen, do you want me to just kind of hit the highlights on this, or do you want to talk about it?
I certainly can.
All right, as long as you're right there yet.
Sure. So Anoka County had extra funding this year, and they put together a grant package for the cities. We had requested they do it earlier in the year, so we have enough time to put a plan together and request funds. The original grant amount was for $25,000, although they were entertaining the idea of capital projects above and beyond. So I think our ask is about $48,000. You talked about the paint program, so it's kind of a perfect transition. So we started the paint program in February, and it was so popular and so brought in so much material so quick that, so, the questions started coming in, can we use the paints? And unfortunately, right now, we can't because we don't have a designated program for it. So then we started talking about this reuse project, and we've talked to you about it before in workshops, about the possibility of it. We finally were able to secure the grant, go forward in the process, and so it will be a combination of paint reuse and items that come in. You wouldn't believe the stuff that comes in that's brand new, that's never been used. And so we're gonna begin very slowly, because we've been kind of talked with other cities and counties, is how their programs work, and so when the time comes, we'll do a slow introduction on it, but we're pretty excited to add this as a permanent part of our expansion project.
Awesome. All right, anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 22-86, accepting additional 2022 SCORE grant funding from Anoka County and authorize appropriate city staff to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Hernandez Jr. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are on to item nine, and that is to consider adoption of resolution 22-84, approving the 2022 and 2023 Teamsters Local 320 Public Works Collective Bargaining Agreement. Mr. Stemwell, I was looking for Ms. Roth.
Mayor, council, Ms. Roth is on vacation right now, so I will summarize some of the changes that are being proposed as a part of this agreement, and then certainly Mr. Hammer, who was very involved in the negotiations, could add some detail to if necessary. While this has taken the two parties some time to come to an agreement, I will say there was a lot that got accomplished in this contract. So officially, the last contract would have been up at December 31st of last year. Here we are in August, approving this one, or hopefully approving this one. But actually, that extra time gave both parties an opportunity to really look at some things that we've been talking about for some years, but, you know, in typical years, it was just too easy to move past them on to other things. And I think where you primarily see that is in the wage article. There's a 3% COLA increase that was included in 2022, but where the real changes start is next year with a COLA and a market increase. However, some of that's offset by sort of trading over time, the license pay. So if you look into the agreement itself, the license pays that cover just about every area of the public works agreement are being phased out. And so that was part of the consideration for the market increase, as well as this new performance band. The performance band itself is something that Mr. Hammer has been very interested in for a number of years, sort of an opportunity to lay out a program by which employees can find a path for themselves to get an additional step, which is good on their end. On our end, it really incentivizes them to maintain certain education requirements, certificates, ongoing things like that, that we really value as an employer, and is an opportunity to sort of help financially incentivize employees to reach for those goals. And it's not automatic. In fact, it won't be nearly automatic, so for those employees who decide not to do it, that's fine, but you're not automatically just moving up to that maximum step on the pay plan. So that was something that took a lot of conversation. I think Tim would agree with that, but ultimately was able to get accomplished in the negotiation. The rest of the things in there are primarily administrative in nature, although some of them are more significant to either party than just purely being administrative, but are things that, again, have been talked about for quite some time. There's about nine of them, so I won't go through all of them, and I'll just pause there, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I know Tim would be as well.
Very good. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
No, I was looking through it, I liked the steps. As a manager from a previous position of accumulating more, what's the word, just more, I'm at a loss of word, like experiences and more, like certificates and skills. That's a good way of just, you know, reaching your goals and, you know, starting at a certain point and ending at a certain point. So that's a really, that's a really good goal setter for new employees coming in. So that's a great, that's a great, that's a great thing you guys are doing there, so just want to commend you on that.
Thank you.
That's a really good thing. It's a lot of work, too, to actually get that going as well, so a lot of time.
I saw that as a win-win.
Definitely was, yeah.
That's good for everybody.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I just wanted to commend the city staff on this one, because when you go through the various different articles in the agreement and you look at the market adjustment, and we've talked about that before, what it shows is that city staff is actually listening to the employees and really addressing the specific things that are brought up, and it's hugely important. So I just want to thank you for that, and I appreciate that it's reflected in the agreement that you arrived at.
So maybe we should move this agreement then at some point.
I'm happy to do it.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. I would then move that council adopt resolution number 22-84, approving the labor agreement between the city and Teamsters Local Number 320.
Second.
Motion by Johnson and a second by Geisler. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Nice work. Thank you for all of that.
Mayor, council, I will mention at the tail end of this, that is the fourth of four contracts that you'll be seeing. It'll be hopefully a year or so down the line before you'll see anything else related to labor agreements, so that'll be a nice little pause for all involved.
All right, very good. Open mic, is there anybody here to address council for open mic this evening? Yes, sir. All right. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes, and if you would just state your name and address, then you have three minutes.
My name's Sean Nelson. I live at 2041 23rd Avenue Northwest. My question is for a, about a residence in our neighborhood that has unbeknownst to us turned their house into a drug rehab center, and we were wondering if they were supposed to notify the neighborhood or the city before that happened, because we didn't know anything about it until we just started to see police show up and the coroner at some point with an overdose and a death in their care, so we were just wondering what that was all about.
Mr. Nelson, would you make sure that the city clerk knows what property you're talking about, and then they will put something together and they'll respond, they'll look into it.
Mention it here, or just?
No, just bring it over to her.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, yeah.
Anybody else with open mic? For open mic? All right, we'll close that. I don't have any report. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, open mic?
Yes.
All right, very good. If you please step to the mic and give us your name and address, you got three minutes.
Hi, my name is Richard Johnson. I'm a resident at River North 10940 Crooked Lake Boulevard Northwest, apartment 246. We're wanting to let the council know that we are fighting the increase in our rents from Dominion, and we're asking for any political help we can get from council. Our rents are going up, and my apartment is $171 per month, and we were told when we moved in that we might see an increase of $20 to $40 a month. Well, this is substantially more, and for people on fixed income, it is driving a lot of people out. People are losing their apartments and having to go live with friends or live in something less desirable. Most of us at River North like the facility, like the employees there, like where we're at, and want to stay there, but if my rent would go up again like this next year, I would be forced out, too. But I'm working on a committee. We're fighting to get things done at the state and federal level and even at the city level. We've been in contact with Senators Jim Abler, Jerry Newton, John Hoffman, Representative Zach Stevenson, city council member Kerry Rayar, U.S. Representatives Dean Phillips, Senator Amy Klobuchar, and Tina Smith, and we've been, we're having the Commissioner of Housing Jennifer Ho coming to speak to us on the 26th, and we have home line attorneys working with us, and Margaret Kaplan at the Housing Justice Center working with us. Our main goal is to stop the high increase this year, which we might not get done, but our secondary goal is to get something accomplished so that this can't continue to happen, that the rent has somehow got to be related to seniors' cost increase in their social security and not to the 11-county actual income from everybody, because our income doesn't compare to people who are working right now. If we're being compared to people earning $100,000, $200,000, we're just gonna be priced out, we'll all be out on the street pretty soon. So what I would like to ask the council is to consider, can the city do something? Can you pass an ordinance like St. Paul did, stating that they can't go above a certain percentage each year? They're accepting city, state, and federal monies to have housing that is supposed to be affordable for seniors, and it's no longer affordable. So we need somebody to act on our behalf. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else here for open mic? All right. Other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I have one thing about our, the road construction this year. I know we started and are talking about feasibility for next year, and I just want to kind of talk about, we've had, at least I've been getting, because it's all in Word 4, an incredible amount of calls from the quality of the contractor, the behavior of the contractors, and so for me, I think it's really just making sure that as we are looking at the things that we're doing with our contractors, that we are kind of looking at holding them to a good standard, and we're making sure as we are starting for our projects in the next year, that there are things like, let's ensure that there's porta potties for the workers. Let's make sure that, that we have good notification standards and things like that, that we can hold our contractors accountable to. They typically have been good. This year has just been hard, and so I want everybody to know that we're looking at these things and need to make sure that when, that we're not necessarily giving glowing reviews to some of these contractors that are, that we're experiencing issues with, and that we'll hopefully take that into account when we look at contracts going forward.
And you're, and you're talking specifically the, the ones working in the city streets?
Yes.
Not the Coon Rapids Boulevard?
City streets.
Okay, all right. Because you got, you got it all going on in Word 4.
I got it. Word 4 has been really busy, really busy, yep.
Okay. Interesting, thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And maybe this is putting Mr. Hammer on the spot. So Coon Rapids Boulevard looks good from basically Anoka to just past Pheasant Ridge. I was thinking that they were gonna go all the way to 111th and then rework that Mississippi Boulevard, Coon Rapids Boulevard intersection. Is that still planned this year, Mr. Hammer, or have they pushed that off to next year?
Councilmember Geisler, the overlay is supposed to go to 111th. I, I haven't communicated with them recently, but there was some rethinking because the intersection improvement at Mississippi is actually a larger project, signals, adding turn lanes. That's not part of the overlay project, that's a separate project that will be coming in the next year or two, so they may have kind of cut things short and, and trying to combine something with that project. I can report back to you when I check with Mr. Hanson about that, but it was my understanding they were going all the way to 111th, but Mississippi intersection is a complete separate project, that'll be a different year.
Got it. Thanks, because I, I think that they've done some of the curb and gutter all the way through 111th, but what they have not done is the reclamation and new street. So they stopped just short of Mississippi Boulevard intersection, so they may be including that with that next project, so that would be good to know.
Or it may just be a final phase before they complete it this fall. I'll find out for you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other business to come before council?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.